The April 4th, 2016 Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Rockland County School Board will now come to an end. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices in order to remain in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please stand and join us with personal remarks?
Attention, all of you. We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are prepared to sign to the mass students from the Crosswood Elementary. I am going to ask them to take one step forward and say their name and their -- (laughter) Don't move. I'm going to ask them to take one step forward in a moment, say their name and their grade, and step back as we go down the line.
My name is Cynthia Mathis Gomez and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Bradley James and I'm in third grade.
My name is Trevor Billy King and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Carter Billy King and I'm also in fourth grade.
My name is Omi Ramirez and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Andrea Ramirez and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Sheila Hady and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Erica and I'm in the fourth grade.
My name is Katie Gunn and I'm in third grade.
My name is Tyler Wilson and I'm in fourth grade.
We also have the principal with us tonight, Ms. Williams. Did she like to say a few things about her students?
This fantastic group of kids are part of our Fine Arts Group that meets after school. And if any of you are free next Thursday night at Springfield High School, we will have the Fine Arts Recital, that's the fourteenth at 6:30. These kids participate in percussion, choir, art program, and dance. It'll be a nice reality if you want us to do it.
Students' achievements must be the focus of our every meeting, our every plan, our every precision. The mission and condition statements of the Rockland County School System are the expressions of what we believe and what we expect. We believe our mission is to ensure each student is prepared to succeed in life. Our vision is that Rockland County Schools will enable all students to reach and exceed high academic and career standards while empowering them to succeed in a technologically advanced and culturally diverse society.
Thank you. Board members, you have before you an agenda for us to operate under tonight. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Crockett. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion passes. We'll move to recognition of student, teacher, and school achievements. The first person that I would like to recognize tonight is a student from Greer Park High School. After the last meeting, Dr. Osburn, the principal of Greer Park High School, contacted me and requested that this student be recognized. The student is Kate Pearson, who won first place in a singing Shakespeare competition sponsored by the National Branch of the English Speaking Union. This is the first singing competition held outside of England and the only one in the United States. Kate will perform for Shakespeare's birthday, April the 23rd, at the National Library and this summer at the Nashville Shakespeare Festival. We're very proud of her. I would ask her to come forward. I would ask her teachers to step up with her, Ms. Moore and Ms. Sloan. I think Ms. Moore and Ms. Sloan would like to say a few words about the upcoming competition and maybe the program in general. Again, I'd like to congratulate you, very proud of you, students of Rockland County.
We'd really rather have her perform.
I was gonna say, I thought she liked singing.
Yes.
If you'd like to be a part of it, but we really would like everyone to come down to the public library and hear her the whole, the entire piece. She's gonna sing a part of it today, and I think you'll really enjoy yourself. It's free to the public and come out to Shakespeare's Department this summer, and we're very, very excited. We can have her spotlight.
How should I, your true love, know from another one? By his cockle hat and stuff and a sandal shoe? He is dead and gone, laid here. He is dead and gone. At his head a grass-grain turf, at his heels a stone. White as shroud as a mountain snow, bordered with sweet flowers, which be well to the grave to go with true love's charms, with true love's charms. How should I, your true love, know from another one? How should I, your true love, know from another one? How should I, your true love, know? Thank you.
The next group that I would like to recognize, Ms. Rerby could not be here tonight, so I'm commanding it for him. On March 8th, nine students from the Rockland County Schools joined approximately 350 of their high school peers in Hurfusboro to express their views of public education in Tennessee at the Tennessee School Boards Association, as we know, TSBA. Student Congress on Policies and Education, referred to as SCO. The event took place on the Middle Tennessee State University campus. Tonight, I would like to recognize these outstanding students who've been selected to represent their school and our county at the SCO Conference. Some of the topics that they discussed, and they had them vote on them, and I went confused with this group. The last year, when they were able to use their phones to vote instantly, you could see how the vote went. I'm sure they continue to do that. But some of the things that they voted on, teachers shall incorporate smartphones into classroom instruction. Thirty-three percent agree, sixty-seven disagree. I find that kind of interesting. All students shall be required to participate in at least one extracurricular activity per year. Forty-three percent agree, fifty-seven disagree. Prior to graduation, students shall be required to complete forty-eight hours of community service during their junior and senior years. Forty-three percent agree, fifty-seven disagree. The school calendar shall be increased from 180 days to 200 days of instruction. Fifteen percent agree.[634.16][634.16](laughter) Eighty-five plus disagree. So I'm going to call their names, that some of them may be here or may not be here, but we sure would like to call their names and recognize them, and we will get their certificate to them if they are not here. From Springfield High School, we have Addison Baker and Cole Tomlin, if they want to either one of you here. From Whitehouse High School, and I may say this wrong, Chelsea Bohm from Whitehouse, and Anthony Tomacho, we recognize him as being attendance. Christina Grant from East Robertson High School, and Corbin Hinkle from Greer Park High School. I know somebody's here. 'Cause I know them. Also from Greer Park High School, Tristan Miranda. Woo![696.82][696.82](applause) You'll just stand here beside me and we'll get a picture with the rest of the group with you.[707.04][707.04](laughter) Rachel Paine from Joe Burns High School. There you go. Luke Sauer, Sauer from Joe Burns High School.[725.32][725.32](applause) Sauer is great. And from East Robertson High School, Isaiah House, where he is sick, he did send word that he was unable to attend. So let's give these students. One take two. One more. Okay, next we have our RCEA. I wanted to go ahead and invite you all to our RCEA Retirement and Distinguished Educator Banquet that will be holding on May 3rd at 6:00 PM. And we'll be at our location this year, we're in habit at Springfield High School. So you'll be receiving an invitation, but I wanted you to go ahead and be able to put that on your calendar, and we'd love to see all of you there. Next up, we have our personnel report.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, last month, we had a total of nine personnel actions on the certified side of the house. Two of those were retirements, two were resignations, and four were leaves of absence and one new hire. On the classified side, we have a total of thirty-six personnel actions, one leave of absence, two retirements, three resignations, three transfers, and twenty-seven new hires. That concludes my report. Subject to your question.
Any questions from Mr. Davis on personnel? Okay, then we'll move on to our expense comparison report.
Members of the board, your expense comparison report is in your packet. Revenues for last year at this time were coming in at seventy-two point ninety-eight percent, and they're seventy-two point forty-nine percent this year. However, the dollar amount reflects about a $2 million increase over last year. This is based on your budget that was submitted beginning of the school year. Your expanded years are running at sixty-one point forty-six percent last year, this year is fifty-eight point thirty percent, and that's about what it was at this time last year. Extending revenues out to property tax, we have a hundred point zero six percent this time last year. This year, we have ninety-seven point ninety-seven percent property tax collect. Sales tax, we have sixty-two point zero four percent last year, we have sixty-two point sixty-eight percent this year, running about what we expected. However, the dollar amount's a little higher because the estimate was a little higher this year. Electricity, we were at seventy-one point twenty-six percent last year, we are sixty-eight point forty-one percent current. Diesel fuel is at fifty-eight point seventy-two percent last year, this time, we are thirty-eight point ninety-one percent current. Gasoline is at ninety-four point forty-three percent this time last year, it's at forty point eighty-nine percent this year. Those two items reflect the drop in prices of fuel for our buses and our fleets. Insurance was at sixty-eight point sixty-seven percent last year, it's at sixty-two point thirty-five percent this year. That concludes my report. Subject to your question.
Any questions on the expense comparison report? Okay, now we'll move on to approval of General Fund Budget.
We have a proposal, a statement, Madam Chairman, members of the board, for a budget amendment. This is a ballot budget amendment, ballots, and it's not requesting additional funding. It's taking money from one line of transferring it to another area where we need those funds to finish the year. The big amount is in the Transportation Department, where they've had some savings in their diesel fuel. We would like to put cameras, video cameras on all of our buses. We have them on some of our buses, and we find that very helpful when it comes to resolving issues with student conflict or things of that nature. So we have the money to do that this year, and we think that would be a wise thing to do. The other big ticket item in there is we need to digitize a lot of our student records, and there's about $40,000 in this budget amendment to take care of putting all the student's records that we currently have this year home, have it actually scanned and put them on, digitized for that. So, but your, subject to your questions, I recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve General Fund Budget Amendment. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Crockett, seconded by Mr. Payne. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye, or oppose no. Motion passes. We'll move on to approval of Carl Perkins Federal Revenues, 2015-16 Budget Amendment.
Yes, ma'am. This is a budget amendment for federal funds for Carl Perkins. I talked to Mr. Gregory today. Basically, he had some money left in a line item that he couldn't use, and if you don't use it, you have to end up sending it back, so it'll be a budget amendment now. To put it into some line items, he can use it in. He needs some additional $750 for other contracted services, and then he also has $625 in there, I think, for professional development speaker. That's great.
Motion to approve by Mr. Blake, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bird. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye, or oppose no. Motion passes. Next, we'll move to approval of Internet Connectivity Contract.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Marshall, our technology coordinator, and I have been working over, by several months, reviewing our connectivity contract with AT&amp;T. We have had a proposal, it's time for us to do something, but we've got a proposal by Educational Networks of America, and we have one here from AT&amp;T. There's a difference of about $20,000 savings for our district if we go with the Educational Networks of America. That's who you were with prior to becoming here, I think, and changed, I don't know what time you actually went to AT&amp;T. But Mr. Marshall is here and prepared to elaborate on what this will do for us. It does more than just save us money, I will tell you that. It expands our bandwidth from schools to central office, also our bandwidth going out. So, Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I believe you pretty well hit on all the high points of the proposal, you wanted to be prepared for the board tonight.[1181.13][1181.13](laughter) I appreciate that, it shows you have a form, Mr. Davis, as we have been working very closely together on this. Before I move into this, I want to briefly say, I don't know if the board's aware, but I want to make sure you're aware, because I'm very proud of the fact that E-Rate funding is several monies that we apply for, and it takes a lot of hoops to jump through to get that money. We applied for Category 2 funding and were awarded almost one-half million dollars in E-Rate money. I'm really proud of that. And we already got to begin work on that, and the state is very proud of that, and actually, through some reimbursements from the two jobs that were bond issued, we'll be able to practically pay our portion for that money. So we're gonna do a half million dollars worth of improvements in our schools, and we're just getting started. It's time to apply for that again, so we're gonna jump back in that bandwagon and see how much money we can apply for. But before that, we joined a Metro Consortium. Metro Schools put out a bid for Internet connectivity. Mr. Davis allowed us to join that consortium, and many other districts did the same. We have done this many times, we keep all our options on the table. We've joined consortiums, we don't have to use it, but if we want to, we're a part of that. So from that consortium, we took a bid from ENA, and then we asked for AT&amp;T's bid, as we do every year. And for the first time, because of Metro's consortium, for the first time in eight years, we have found that ENA has offered a less expensive solution. We originally went to AT&amp;T, changed eight years ago, basically because of money. The state awarded the contract to AT&amp;T, many other districts did not want to do that. It took some doing, they had to change their email, had to change a lot of things, and we did that, that was eight years ago. So now, things have come back around. Metro Consortium allowed us to get in there and participate in that bid, and it appears that they are gonna be less expensive. And what Mr. Davis alluded to is, we've asked for a bandwidth upgrade in this within the budget that we already currently have in place. Mr. Davis, you get all you can with what you have in hand. So we asked, we will literally double the bandwidth in our schools. We will increase our network e-rates, which is the pipe one out of our new data center here to Nashville, by 250 mays. We're currently at 450, we'll bump that to 750. Our schools are currently 250, we're gonna bump them to 500, all for less money than we currently been paying. Mr. Davis likes that idea. So we have agreed, I spoke with Mr. Davis, he agreed to let me present this to you for approval. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000, it figured out to be a little more than that, but to be able to say so, I think we're saving somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000 with this upgrade that we're talking about. Now, this is also E-Rate funding. Now, one thing that I want you all to be clear on, the state, they do not stay on the state contract. The state pays the district $3.55 per ATM. So they get, this was lobbied for legislation, when AT&amp;T got this contract, many districts did not want to change, but it was a TC that happened to be in the Senate at the time. He lobbied to give the money to the district, they didn't make their own decision, and that was approved, and that's been going on now for six to eight years, I know of. So we'll get, the bill will look like a lot more than this, but we're getting a portion back from the state, and we'll have E-Rate apply to that. So the bottom line figure, and I figured it, believe me very closely, should save us somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000. So Andrew Bryan is here with ENA tonight, if you have any questions from ENA. We were ENA customers from way, way back, and we know these people. They were very nice when we left, and they've been very nice to us continuously the last eight years. Of course, they try to come back and gain our business every year, and they wouldn't be salespeople if they didn't. But very gracious when we turned them down due to money. This time, I just couldn't, I couldn't run them out of my office, I told them. When they came in with a bid less, I had to look at it. I went running up to Mr. Davis, said, "Here it is, what do you think?" He said, "Well, it's presumed to the board." So it would be my recommendation, Rockland County Schools would go forward with ENA for the sixteen-seventy school year.
Help also, Mr. Marshall, this is, bid is good for, what, five years?
It's good for a five, it's a sixty-month.
Sixty-month?
Sixty-month contract that is not enforceable. I'm told that we can get out of that at any time. There are no construction costs involved in this. When we went to fiber with AT&amp;T, we paid construction costs, and we had to provide climate, and we had, there was lots of little hoops to jump through. Andrew, I'm putting you on the spot in front of the board, but they, he and his boss came to visit with me, and they assure me there are no cost they will take care of. This, what will happen here is, just in case y'all are nervous about the Internet, anybody in the audience, it might be, the current Internet is good, it runs through July 1st. A separate circuit comes into that building, a separate router comes into that building, everything's established, up and running, and it's tested 100%, and July 1st, we change connection from this router to this router, and we change Internet. So there will be very, very minimal interruption in Internet, if any, to our schools, and that'll occur July 1st.
Okay, heard answer clear.
My recommendation, Madam Chairman, is if we accept Mr. Marshall's recommendation, go with Educational Networks of America for our Internet connectivity.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Bird, second by Mr. Payne. Any questions for discussion? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye, oppose no. Motion passes. And may I say thank you. Mr. Marshall works some long, hard hours. We give you a hard time sometimes, money flies, but we really do appreciate everything you do. And I know that E-Rate money, that takes a lot of time.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so, thank you very much.
I had a decent talk with Chris the Redeemer, I think that was it.
I say one thing that this will do, I didn't say this earlier, but as we go forward on the next sixty months, we're gonna have a greater demand for bandwidth in your schools and in your district, and this is meeting that need. Our board is the one who's not happy with something anyway, so. It's a three, isn't it? Move.
Okay, we'll move to approval of Board Policies Revision. We have some for first reading and second reading.
You want to do the second, Madam Chairman?
I was just gonna say, if Miss Meisenman wanted to. I mean, I think we need to do it separately. Madam Chairman, members of the board, last month, we began the formal process of reviewing and adopting our entire new policy manual. In mid-January, we received recommendations from Tennessee School Board Association that would update all of our policies. We are looking at them, a section at a time. We have had committee members, committees review each section from our central office staff. They have made minor recommendations to the TSBA policies that you received earlier. Those recommendations have been vetted by TSBA and considered to keep the policy in compliance. So tonight, we would look at Section 1 and 2 for a second reading and adoption of our new board policy manual.
Is there a second? Second.
Motion by Mr. Crockett, second by Mr. Payne. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval of Sections 1 and 2 on second reading, make it known by saying aye, or oppose no. Motion passes. The next order of business would be to look at Section 3 and Section 4 for first reading. On Section 3, just to let you know, the team members that reviewed the TSBA recommendations, we have James Marshall, Patsy Redberry, Joshua Donovan, Brandon Woodard, Jimmy Finch, Donna Doris, and Terry Simmons, all reviewing Section 3 and making recommendations. You have seen the recommendations that they made, I believe they came to you earlier this week. On Section 4, our central office staff that reviewed the TSBA recommendations, including Melanie Dickerson, Bill Watt, Chris Cossey, and Mark Redd. Those recommendations also point to you. Those have been vetted by TSBA and considered to keep the policies in compliance with the recommendations that they sent in January, so we would ask for approval on first reading of Sections 3 and 4 of the policy manual tonight. For this request, what's your pleasure? We have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Blake, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crockett. Any questions for discussion on Sections 3 and 4? Motion by Mr. White, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crockett. Any questions for discussion on sections three and four? All those in favor of approval of sections three and four on first reading, make it number 10 and 10.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. And I would like to thank the central office supervisors. I know that took some time for you all to go through all of those, but we appreciate that. And I said this last month to the people that were in the audience, but we may have some different people this time. It looks like we're sitting here going through something just really quick and not giving it much thought. But as Ms. Mason said, we've had these policies since January. So trust me, we have read them and read them and read them again. So it's not something that we've taken lightly. I just wanted you all to know that.
Just as a bid, Madam Chairman, I recommend Ms. Mason hold it up to the board policy manual. It's about three inches thick. It does take a clock.
It makes some very interesting reading if you want to follow along.
And by the way, they are, our policies are online and as these become adopted, these will also be placed online.
Okay, I think we'll move on to approval of mowing contracts for Central Quadrant.
Madam Chairman, we have divided our mowing contract up into four different quadrants. And we thought we had everything settled until mowing season started. And one of the contractors, well, Central Springfield Mowing Contract, opted to not do that contract. So we get, like we did last year, we went down to the next bidder to see if they were interested in doing the contract size that was submitted last year. And that bidder declined to take it. So we went for the next bidder and that is Mr. Stewart, Justin Stewart, Stewart Martin Moncar, and he agreed to take it at his bid that he submitted initially. And so tonight, I'm asking that we award the Central Quadrant to Mr. Justin Stewart. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion by Mr. Hurd and a second by Mr. White. Any questions for discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it number 10 and 10.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We'll move on to approval of our five-year facilities plan.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, we have worked, you all have worked for this, I think, on this project for the last several months. And we need to put forward a five-year facility plan to the County Commission. So they'll have some type of blueprint to plan for the funding of future projects in this district. We have had Mr. Morris from Cosmical Jones and Morris do a thorough survey of all of our buildings, of each of our buildings and our district as a whole. And we have three documents to support that. These are updates, July 2015, December 7th, we get another, and then we have another pricing document here, budget and proposed amounts to be spent. We have finally agreed, I think, at our last work session on this to put these projects in order, but we would like to see them funded and completed. And that's what you have before you tonight, is a spreadsheet that summarizes all of this survey work that Mr. Morris and his company did for us. And actually, those past five years, I don't know if Ms. Moore is here, she and her committee need to take this up and then they will need to take it to the County Commission. There's no way we can get it to five years, and I think we came to that conclusion. The roofs, for example, extend out to 15 years because you're going to be practically a roof of the year for 15 years. And then your maintenance is about 14 years out. And then you have capital projects that are programmed out for eight years. And your technology department, we are going to request in our budget this year that a three cents of the tax dollar be set aside and be restricted, in a restricted fund, to be used for technology. And that's primarily for student laptops. And that is, we're going to have to start doing this at some point. And if we do that for five, we've got a program for eight years, if we do that for a period of eight years, we will be able to get to that one-to-one. In other words, each student will be able to have a laptop with their textbooks on the laptop. That's the goal. We've got to start somewhere. And the first year, that would be $400,000, which is about what three cents will generate on the revenue side as far as property taxes are concerned. And then, of course, we have apartment ops that need to be, desperately need to be repaired. Some of them need to be totally restrypped, some of them need to be resurfaced and restripped in parking spaces identified. So my recommendation to the board is that you adopt this plan that we have before you this evening, send it to the education committee for them to review, and they can then take it on to the, to the County Commission. My recommendation.
Okay. Any other questions to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Payne, second by Mr. White. Any questions for discussion? All those in favor of approval of this proposed five-year facilities plan, make it number 10 and 10.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We'll move on to approval of plans and specifications for renovations, science lab, and auditorium at Springfield Middle School.
Madam Chairman, we had Mr. Morris in a work session for this evening. We need to turn him loose, go ahead and complete the plans and specifications for a science lab at Springfield Middle School, which is a requirement as part of the DOJ agreement to have a STEM program. It's pretty hard, Dr. Bell, to have an effective STEM program without suitable science lab. So I recommended that we would approve the presentation that Mr. Morris made earlier. And also, at the same time, turn him loose to go ahead and complete the plans and specifications for restoration of the auditorium at Springfield Middle School, which is also a part of the DOJ agreement. So subject, your, well, you all have heard all the information earlier, but if you want Mr. Morris to come up, is he still here?
He's here.
If you want him to come up and talk about it, we'd be happy to try and do that.
The only thing I'd like to ask, and I think Mr. Morris and Dr. Bell has had a chance to get together, is there anything else that you all could think of that we didn't do?
No, when we looked at it just before the meeting, Dr. Bell accepted everything we talked about in the work session, enlightened him in adding the cut through, walk through between the seats.
Anything else, Dr. Bell?
No, I think aye. Everything looks good. Thank you.
With approval, remodel of the science lab and auditorium at Springfield Middle School?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Crockett, second by Mr. White. Any questions for discussion? Yes, this is both all before we end tonight.
That's what he said. He did say that.
All those in favor, make it number 10 and 10.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. As quick as you can.
Mr. Marshall? Mr. Marshall is planning to come back for the next meeting with the final plans and specifications for the sports facility at Springfield High School. When this is bonded, it will all be under one bond issue from the commission. But he wasn't prepared for that, so he'll be back next month.
Okay, we're ready to move on to update on building projects?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, I left some pictures of the ground is that last Friday, I think it was. The contractor is moving along quite nicely, having talked much better than I had anticipated when we went through the bad weather in January, February. But they are putting up walls and setting bars on us and really making a lot of progress down there. I still think that those two or three weeks that we lost will be made up. But I've talked to Mr. Smith and he tells me that they're going to work Saturdays and other times, but whatever they have to do to get us in.
And we're there Saturday by early in the block. I was there, so.
They were really on top of the project. It looks good. They got the undercut, they got the reports back on the soil that wasn't suitable and had to be removed because old material had been processed there when they built the original building. And they got that all out and went back and did a compaction with some shot rock and all of that's completely, all of that came back excellent, but that's probably won. So that's, subject, your question on what, that's about the only thing I can tell you. We had a little lightning strike and Jimmy's here, went out of the storm and it knocked out two legs of power in the new section. But contractor was able to get up there that night and come on with it. Nice work. Nobody was hurt. That was pretty, pretty good response. Central office, we lack just a few minor things here, primarily the signage. And I had a big box come in today and was left here for the contractor to think that's his signage in that box, but he wasn't here then. So I contacted him and told him that the box was here, once they got the signage of it, and if you would like to set a date for an open house, we can schedule that at your convenience. So we're almost finished here. Crestview Elementary School, I think about the only thing they lack out there, a couple of punched-in items during spring break on that, did mostly seating that had to be redone. They lacked a couple of brick, bricks that needed to be replaced that we weren't satisfied with. And I think a plaque, building plaque needs to be installed. Not a lot left and worked off of punched-in items that we identified. So we're pretty happy with that building as well. Subject, your questions, any questions on some of the construction documents?
Any replacements on our building projects? Moving on to the rest of your board.
We have been working with a civil side engineering firm and they have completed all of the plans and specifications to bring all of our high school facilities up to compliance with the ADA requirements. Those are out for bid as we speak. They'll be coming back in this next week. And once we take it to bids and we have a chance to review those, we'll come back to you. We may be called a special meeting just to address that so that we can get a contractor to work on those. Shouldn't take over 15 minutes to have a meeting to do something like that. But that is an item that needs to be, has to be addressed by our school system and the County Commission. Federal law is pretty clear on that ADA compliance. If you have a public facility or if you have a private business, you must have appropriate signage, parking spaces, and appropriate access, access points to all of those areas. We have had some folks that have been unable to gain access to our athletic facilities that were built and weren't built with the ADA codes in mind at the time. So that's one of the things that we continue to work on. I will tell you that our assessment, after we finally got the assessment, I don't know if Dr. Cossey's here or not, but Gaye is, he and his group and his volunteers worked very hard to get those assessment documents scripted and then recollected and back to the state. That was a real interesting task this year because we were all anticipating an online assessment. That online assessment went by the wayside about 15 minutes into the first day that we had online assessment. And we ended up having to do a paper with Mr. Paine. So I commend him and his group for hard work and the extra hours that they put in even on Saturday or Sunday to let that work. He is now planning to schedule the second phase of the assessment process. And this year, the assessment is done in two phases, and I think that's going to go smoothly as well. I will tell you that some legislation was passed, and I know, I don't think Nikki mentioned it, but there was a piece of legislation, should make you all very happy, makes me happy, that was going to hold harmless all the teachers and students and everyone affected by this year's assessment process. It passed both the House and the Senate last week and should be signed into law by the government. It's just unfair the way that system was designed, worked, didn't work the way it's supposed to. We will still get the results, but the results will not be used to make any judgments as to whether a teacher is a level one, two, three, four, or five, or it will not be used to hinder a student's grade. I believe the legislation says a teacher may use it if they choose. They don't have to use it if they don't want to. So I think that's a good, good piece of legislation. We still continue to monitor other pieces of legislation that are pending, but I think they're about ready to go home. We're happy for legislation to go home as soon as possible. I also received a letter back in Jan, back on February 1st, I received a letter from a group of folks who said we intend to submit an application for a charter school. And we fully anticipated that, and at the last board meeting, you established a review committee. We received a letter this week, last week, and that group has decided to withdraw their letter that was submitted. So we will not be, they, a charter school application this year. Other than that, things are going pretty smooth. We've been working on budgets with each of the departments and we've pretty much got the departments down. As usual, they got more on their wish list than Santa Claus could provide, especially Mr. Marshall. So we have looked at all of that, and now we're going to be meeting with the principals of each of the schools to get their needs assessed in each school. That's been a pretty busy time. Subject, your questions on anything, that can fix my.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Paine? We'll move on to comments, Madam Chairman.
The only thing I got, I mentioned to you guys earlier that I went by Springfield Middle School, listened to Dr. Bell and Mrs. Anderson talk about Rockland County Academy and a magnet school is what the normal, everybody recognizes that. And just to watch, I tell them about, but I was just to watch the kids' eyes as you were talking, you and Lisa was talking about the magnet school and the look at parents' eyes of what's going to happen there. There's going to be a lot of great things happening there next year, and we thank you and Lisa for adding that up and look forward to it. I know you've got two more meetings with parents and I'm sure that they'll look at it the same way. But let's see, Rockland County.
Innovation Academy.
Innovation Academy.
Thursday and four and six, we'll have two more meetings. We had a packed library tonight, really exceeded our expectations. Yeah, the looks of the kids were the most powerful thing that occurred. Excited about it.
I mean, I'm excited about it. I don't mean, I wish I had a child. We're still a bit young, but I mean, it's going to be great.
I had a little moment tonight, my daughter was giving a little word for the score that TSBA put on tonight. But I want to give graduations to TSBA because here's a girl that's been to all kinds of functions over the years, has come home and said, "Yeah, it's okay. It was all right." She came home from this, she said it was the best program that she had been to. And she really enjoyed it. She said, "I just wish we could have done it from ninth grade on like some other schools out." So I'd like to see a little more maybe involvement down the road of that. Because some of the schools, I think in Dummer County and Chatham County, they go more than one, just their seniors, they send ninth and 10th and 11th grade. And it really gets their minds focused, she said. And I was really proud that she got that much out of it.
Mr. Harris, she tells me she told me on the stand in the school. I can tell you.
Mr. White?
I would just like to thank the staff because I know that you all have put in a lot of time over the last few months, putting a lot of this stuff together. Apologize for the voice, it's just not here tonight. With all the different things going on, I've had some conversations with the director and I talked to him about possibilities of us having a county athletic director. And I think that's something that we need to be pushing toward to eliminate problems that could come up in the future, as well as, from my understanding, from weighing down T double S double A with the phone calls from seven different schools or eight different schools, the questions that a county athletic director could handle. So I'd like to see us move in putting this together and getting it. us move and putting this together and getting it on board for next year.
To respond to that, Mr. White, you and I have discussed that, and we are placing that in our budget for next year, and I've already asked Mr. Simmons to start putting together a job description form and a petition, so that we all have another question for the board. Some of the things that we're gonna try to do in the future, with the screening athletes and the qualifications, especially with the Reson, with the Gumber, I think it's important we have some of that in this, that process, and we did that through AD, county law.
And that's all, I thank you all for all the work.
Mr. Hurd?
I'd like to thank Dr. Osborne, they had a mock disaster trial last week, that is something very important, and I teach in one of these middle and high schools, this time of year, we all know that these kids are thinking about getting out, getting out into the real world, accidents happen, but those trials and mock disasters puts them at the last in part of their process, and I think we should pay a remembering our colleagues and students over in Chedon County, where they had a tragedy lost this weekend, students being murdered, but just, just maybe keep our neighbors in our mind, so thank you, Katie.
Second?
I have nothing to say at this time.
Well, I just want to say how excited I am about what's going on at Springfield Middle. I do, I think we have to look at, we are, we are going to offer an opportunity that's never been offered in Robinson County to our students, and that is, that is tremendous. I'm very excited about that. I know the next item I'm gonna mention, you all aren't gonna be quite as excited about, but on May the 9th, we need to have a work session devoted only to the budget. That's the Monday night after our regularly scheduled meeting, which is on the 2nd, but May 9th, time, I'm open, I kind of thought maybe if you all would give us some feedback right now, what time can you be, what's the earliest?
What time is your time? It's at five, five in the morning?
Five o'clock. May 9th at five o'clock. And that's all I have. Right, I knew that, that's why I didn't direct my attention to your time, so, okay. Okay, do we have any old business that's come before us tonight? Any new business? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor, at the same time?